Hi, everybody, and welcome to the March Planning Commission for the City of Springdale. I'm glad that you're all here. If you would, before we get started here, let's take a moment and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and an invocation led by Mr. Dale Tyler. Thank you. Let's do our roll call.
Howard Austin.
Here.
Ray Cardiell.
Mark Cloud.
Here.
Gary Compton.
Brent Couch.
Chris Hussein.
Here.
Jennifer Keith.
Here.
Teresa Reynolds.
Here.
Dale Tyler.
Here.
If you've had a chance to look over the minutes from our February 6 meeting, I'd entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
We have a number of tabled items to...
Okay.
We've got a couple tabled items tonight, so let me turn it over to Patsy just to kind of cover those items.
Okay, we have four items on tonight's agenda that are being tabled. These items will go back to the April Planning Commission meeting. If they're tabled again at that meeting, they will have to resubmit and start the process over. The items to be tabled tonight is our 2409 rezoning request by Talbot Properties from A1 to MF12, the conditional use for Iglesia Palabra Viva Church in C2 Zone, the preliminary plat for Brentwood Village Phase 4, and the variance request for Al Glover for reduction of front setback. We need a motion to table these items on the agenda.
So motion.
Motion by Dale Tyler.
Second.
Second by Mark Cloud. All in favor of that? Those opposed?
Okay, again, those items will be placed at the beginning of the April 2 Planning Commission meeting, and if those are tabled again at that time, they will be required to resubmit.
I just wanted to clarify for the record, and I know what you said that the rezoning that's being tabled was to MF12, it's actually MF4.
Sorry. It is the R2409, which is a whole new application for Talbot Properties from A1 to MF4, and it will be heard in April.
Thank you, Patsy. We have a number of items that were tabled at the last meeting. The first one is a rezone, R2404, Adam and Gabrielle Keely, and it's presented tonight by Robert Castor.
So Robert is not... Oh, I'm Gabrielle Keely. So we're just requesting that it's approved as requested. My husband picked the introvert to be here, I'm sorry. I have so much anxiety. Yeah. Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you.
Goals and policies of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan is recommended for approval. Assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size. Encourage the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springdale.
Are there any comments from members in the audience? Hearing none. To the commission.
Assuming these are for both tracks.
This should be a call for the vote. If there are no further questions. Call for the vote by Ray Cardiell.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiell. Cloud.
Yes.
Compton. Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Passes unanimously, thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance to go to council on March 26.
Next item on the agenda is a rezone, R2405, Berean Properties, and this is presented by Wayne Van Hook.
We are asking for our rezoning to be changed from C5 to C2. Do appreciate you all letting this table till we got all the details correct before... But it... The people that are leasing the property from Berean Properties, we needed C2 to be in compliance. The adjoining properties are C2. We would appreciate a vote for C2.
Okay, I got a question. The current property owner is in Automotive Services, right?
The owner's leasing it... There's Auto Services and a roofing company.
Okay.
In the building.
Okay. The adopted Comprehensive Land Use Plan incites regional use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure. Encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development. This actually is a downgrade.
Excuse me?
It's a downgrade from what the existing...
And we understand that.
Okay.
Thank you, Wayne. Is there any comments from the audience? Hearing none, that would come to the commission. Any questions or comments from the commissioners?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mark Cloud.
Cardiell. Cloud.
Yes.
Compton. Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
That passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry we bothered you twice.
Staff will prepare the ordinance to go to the council on the 26th.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we've got from last month, a rezone, 2405. This is Hillcrest Village. We've also got as part of that a variance request on the parking. This should be presented tonight by ESI.
Okay, I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
At the last Planning Commission meeting, the concern... Can we go to the next slide? Was the number of units along that entrance and the lack of parking along the street? So what was done to address that additional parking that's needed if those parking spaces inside the garages are counted?
We added four spaces at the entry for additional visitor parking.
So for that many units, you think four additional parking spaces will cover it?
Yeah, I mean, if you can look at the central area there, we've got, I would say, 14 or 15 on the First North South Road, which, I mean, if you kind of centralized the parking for that group of units, we just thought adding that additional parking on the east side would accommodate the end units. And then we've got parking on the west side to kind of cover those areas. That was sufficient.
Okay, I have to question that, because I think you're not going to get enough people to go interior to park there, and that street's going to be parked full of cars. You also want to count the spaces in the garages as part of your parking account, but you don't have enough handicap spaces to cover that many parking spaces.
Well, all of the garages are ADA accessible, so, I mean, effectively, all of those spaces are ADA compliant. So, I mean...
Okay, that's pushing it a little bit. Anybody who shows up that is handicapped, though, has a long ways to go to get to a handicap space, depending on who they're visiting.
If you're looking at just ADA... If you're looking at space, total space count, not including garages or driveways, we've accommodated the requirements from ADA sufficiently.
Basically, you're asking for anything inside the garages an ADA space. All of those are going to be... None of those really steep driveways where you can't get up on those?
The garages are flat.
Okay, I just... I don't... I think we're missing the point. We're putting in a subdivision with allotting units in a short area with an adequate amount of parking, and that's my personal opinion.
And we've clarified the grading on the plan. We've went through, added all the slopes of the driveways to try to clarify there's not excessive amount of slope as the first phase in a couple of those areas.
You've heard me say in other projects, I think we've got too many buildings in too small of an area. The first is a variance request for a variance for the parking requirements.
So, my name's John Brittenham, I'm the developer on the project. I believe we have 41 additional parking spaces, not including the driveways or the garages. I don't know how many of those are handicap accessible right now, but that's, ratio-wise from what we did in Phase 1, that's at least 3X more than what we had in Phase 1. So, we feel that we've downgraded in density on this phase versus what we did on the prior phase. We have a lot more additional parking, so we're trying to meet the intent of the ordinance and what you guys had requested us to do. So I guess I'm confused on what...
Does the first phase have double car garages, or are they all single?
Yes, they're all double.
Okay, so you had two parking spaces in each...
Wait, wait a second. Some of them are double, and some of them are single.
Okay.
So in the first phase, 70% of them were double.
Each unit had two parking spaces inside. The other problem I have with this is, this not being a PUD, we do not have any way to ensure that those garages are being used for vehicle parking. They could be full of stuff. And in a PUD, we can set a standard where, you know, we can go in and say, "You can't do that because you can't store it, it's got to be for parking." This not being a PUD, that's left up to management. It's a little bit different as far as that's concerned.
Was the first phase a PUD?
No.
And we don't have any problems there?
It's not full yet either, is it?
No, it's not full, but while we have occupied, we have zero issues with storage in the garages and parking issues.
What's the feedback been on the driveways that are at an incredible slope? What does that be, feedback been?
So we have... We have less than 15 driveways that are what you all are considering too steep. I personally made the call in the field when we were building the pads. Jason and ESI had built the pads to a certain elevation. I made the decision to raise some of those pads, and it was a bad decision. I'm the owner, and I got to deal with it when people are trying to rent it and have an issue, so we're having to compensate on rent to get people in those units. It hurts us financially because I made a bad decision, and I'll own up to that.
I think the first time this was brought and I spoke, it wasn't... I think it was taken to amenities and things like that, which I appreciate the amenities that you all are offering from garages and things. But just knowing real-world situations, and if these are two-bedroom units, theoretically, four adults could be in these units. Not saying it is, but there's a scenario where there could be four adults in these units with four vehicles. Single-car garages, I know there's a likelihood that some of those are going to have stuff in them. Not saying it's a high percentage, but even if 30%. The driveways we looked at last time, when the distance between two driveways, there's no way to park a car without overlapping the driveways if you did park on the road. I don't see a scenario where this, the parking, would be ideal. Could be, but I see a lot of scenarios where there's units on the road, I mean, vehicles on the road, and then it's not even set up in a situation to where the 10 feet between two driveways, most vehicles are 13 feet plus, that you would be overlapping driveways. And even the size of the driveway or the garage potentially would not account for some of the larger vehicles too, I'm sure. I just see issues with the current scenario in allocating a full parking spot as a garage spot. Just personal opinion.
So we currently have 20, roughly 20 feet from the garage to the sidewalk. So, majority of the people, majority of the cars will fit in that space. In residential, single-family detached subdivisions that we do a couple hundred houses a year in, we only have 25 feet. So, 20 is more than enough to fit the majority of the cars.
In Springdale, though, the front setback for a single-family home is 30 feet. So you would have had to go out into something different to get a 25-foot front on a single-family home.
Okay.
How deep are the garages?
Anywhere from, probably 20 feet, ma'am? They're 21 feet. I mean, how many additional spaces, Patsy, do you feel would be adequate?
Well, I'm not designating a project for you, so you'll have to determine how many you think you need. And then you think you've got enough. I don't think that's enough, but you could propose something different. Four spaces, to me, seems like kind of a token effort to add some additional spaces.
So is it the four spaces at the front that are... Okay.
Well, you didn't add anything else to those units along that entrance except those four spaces at the front. So you're assuming somebody who's coming in next to the dog park has a visitor who's going to park over there on that side and walk all the way back down there. That's not what public usually does.
Is there room to put some more across the street?
You've got to have the open space, so you're going to have to calculate whether you've got enough open space to meet the minimum requirements if you take that out.
Why don't we do this? Can we table it again?
This is the second time you'll have to notify the adjacent property owners again to do that. But you're welcome to do that if you want to take the time and see if you can come up with some other scenario. One of the things we talked about at the meeting, can you move the dumpster someplace and put some parking in there? Or is there a great issue there?
No, we can do that. I mean, I don't know why we have to have...
We're not in the designing business at the table. That's not what we're doing here.
I understand, and I felt like that we'd met the intent of the ordinance with our parking, and clearly, we're being told that we don't, and we're trying to come up with a solution. And we'll go back and we'll look at it again, but I would like some more input from staff on exactly where they want these things, because it sounds like they want to be involved in the design. So let's get our heads together, and let's do that, and we don't have a problem. I mean, we knew all along that we were going to have a Phase 2, and it was going to be the amenity, and I felt like we've done a really, really good job of laying this site out, because it is challenging. It has a lot of topography change, and, you know, it's... We've had a successful project to the north, and this one's going to be equally as, but we... Especially with the amenity, so we want to do... We want to be right.
Well, this was tabled last month, and as far as I know, was there any discussion with staff about what you were submitting? It was just resubmitted, right? We didn't have any opportunity to comment on it, it was just resubmitted with this change to it, so we assumed you were doing what you wanted done.
Yeah, we thought we addressed the comments of parking and the driveway slopes. Those were the two main points of discussion at the previous meeting.
Do you want the planning commission to go ahead and vote on the variance, then you know which way to go? Do you want to table it and come back? If the variance is denied, you can appeal it to city council. If the city council opposes the city's... The planning commission's decision for the denial of the variance, you can't ask for that variance for another year.
We'll just table it and go back.
Okay. Okay. Tabled it is. Thank you.
So you will have to notify the adjacent property owners again? Okay.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, 2410. This is Jasmine Engelis, and it's presented by Jasmine Engelis. Welcome.
Hello. So, on the last meeting, you guys said that I couldn't have the shed, so we took it down. There's no shed anymore. And then you guys wanted the exact measurement from the sunroom to the fence. So, we measured it, and it was eight, eight and a half.
Okay, well, it looks like there's a 10-foot utility easement through there, which means you're encroaching upon the utility easement if it's only eight feet and a half to the fence. And you can encroach upon a utility easement with a structure.
No, it's not on the utility easement. If you look at the survey...
Okay, but if you look at the survey, we need to verify that. It needs to be not from the fence, it has to be from the corner pins of the property. Did you have it measured from there?
Tom and somebody else came to measure.
Okay, I think the understanding was it's encroaching into the utility easement, based on what they found.
I just talked to Mr. Timothy West, the guy that did the survey, and he said that it wasn't. He said it then.
Okay, and this was built without a permit, correct?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay. I think we really need to verify that it's not built in the utility easement, because you can't build any utility easement.
Tom Evers went out there, I think, last week, and he came back and told us that he measured from property pins and confirmed that it was encroaching by a couple feet.
That needs to be clarified before we can move forward. You can also go ahead and take action on their variance request if you want to tonight, and then we know where we are.
This would be a call for the vote, and I guess it would help clarify for Jasmine what our sentiment is, as they determine then what course of action she would take. So this would be a call for the vote to support the variance request.
Do we have a... What's the fire? What's their input on this?
Steve, you want to comment on this one?
Fire department's opposed to setback variances as standard as any.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience tonight? Any comments from the commissioners?
So let me get this straight. You want us to vote on the setback variance from 20 to 10, assuming that it is 10? If it's more than 10, if it's eight and a half, which is what we're hearing, then even our variance approval would be, what? Not... I don't know what that... Not sure what to do with it.
Well, the situation is, we're recreating a situation by adding on to the back of these houses that at best case violates code ordinance or the fire code of the fire safety issues to start with. I don't know. I don't know that the two-foot makes a difference. If it does encroach on the utility easement, then they've got to go to all the utility companies, and they have to agree to vacate that portion of it before we could even do it that way. All we're doing is prolonging the inevitable in my amount. I mean, there's... I would say we go ahead and vote on the variance. If it doesn't pass, then she has time to take it down, or she has to come in and prove to us, and you have to come back that it's not encroaching on that easement.
I suppose that keeps it just as simple as we can to vote on the variance the way it exists, so...
Patsy, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Clarification on the survey. Tom was not able to find the pins because they were in the neighbor's property, and they were on the other side of the fence. The second thing is, is that surveys go from the wall to the property line. They'll show the wall of the property, they do not show the overhang. Our concern is that the overhang is into the utility easement, and that utility... Then that would require that they either tear off the eve or require a vacation of the easement.
Either way you go, it's pushing it to the limit of what work could be.
This would be a call for the vote for the variance request.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Mark Cloud.
Cloud.
No.
Compton. Couch.
No.
Hussein.
No.
Keith.
No.
Reynolds.
No.
Tyler.
No.
Austin.
No.
Cardiell.
No.
The variance request is denied. You have the option to appeal to the city council. The planning commission's denial, you have to notify the adjacent property owners again, you have to file an appeal with the city clerk's office. You have seven days to file that appeal. If you don't file an appeal, it has to be taken down within 30 days. Okay?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's 15 days for appeal. I'm sorry. You have 15 days here.
Next on the agenda, we've got a public hearing. This is a rezone. It's presented by ESI. This is on 261 North 40th Street from A1 to MF12.
Thank you, Brandon Rush with ESI. Like you said, we're looking to rezone this to MF12. Happy to answer any questions.
Ready for me? The Comprehensive Land Use Plan incites medium-density residential use for this area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential developments. Encourage the development of a variety of housing types. The question that's going to come up is, how much of this area is actually going to be buildable because of the floodplain and all that that's on there? Have you all calculated how much actual buildable area there is?
We've done some preliminary looking, but it's not finalized yet.
Okay, because it does have some challenges.
Right.
Yeah, okay. And is the MF12 to accommodate smaller lot sizes or higher density? Or what are we looking for the MF12 for?
Yeah, it's kind of a balance of accounting for that area that won't be buildable.
We do have one opposition letter that came in this afternoon. Everyone has a copy of it on the table. Do you want it read into the record, or do you want to just add it to the record as was presented? And it is in opposition to the rezoning.
So just add it to the record? You all have copies.
Thank you, Dale. Anybody from the audience have any comments on this particular request? To the commission, any comments from the commissioners? This would be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Dale Tyler, call for the vote.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Keith. Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Staff repairs the ordinance against council on the 26th.
Thank you. We jump on page two of the agenda down to final plat. This is Barbary Court on 3190 East Robinson, again presented by ESI.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. Here a question approval for final plat for Barbary Court, phase two. I'll answer any questions.
I'll start with the first question. Do you have all of the requirements of bonding and payment and all that stuff in?
Not totally yet. We're still working on the final plat checklist.
Okay, you realize it can't be signed until all those checklist things have been done. We have any other staff comments?
Just need to finish the punch list from the final walkthrough and submit the maintenance plan for the pond.
Thanks, Katie.
Which is not on the checklist, right? That's in addition to.
Right, so the checklist would be the the documentation, the bonding. This would be the final construction wrap-up.
Planning has some comments. In addition to standard comments, we are needing the benchmark data. ESI's comment response stated they will provide prior to requesting signatures.
Any other staff comments? No. Any comments from the audience on this project? Hearing none, this had come to the commission as a motion subject to the staff comments.
I make a motion subject to the staff comments.
That's from Mr. Cloud. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Brent.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
If you want this to go to council next week, the ordinance needs to be in our office by noon tomorrow. With the understanding you won't get final signature until all the rest of it's done.
We're close.
Thanks, Jason. Under large scale, this is large-scale 2410 White Road Retail. They've also got a variance request that's attached to this. But. Go ahead. This is presented by ESI.
Thank you, Brandon Rush with ESI. This is a proposed retail building, five doors, 777 White Road where it curves. It's an existing parking lot. Basically, it's just going to utilize the existing parking and build the building in the middle of the existing parking lot. The variance is kind of a two-part. One is 60% of parking between the facade and the right-of-way, which we're close on. But you can see we're 13% over. And that's just because we're trying to utilize the existing parking lot as best we can. We did try to put as many spots around on the other sides as we could to break up that front parking. And the second part is landscaping variance. There's a lot of overhead power lines on the front of this property, so we could not plant trees in those areas. So we relocated those trees elsewhere on the site. Same count.
Do we have any staff comments?
Any staff comments here?
In addition to standard comments, we have the two variance requests for over 60% of parking between the front facade and the right-of-way, the perimeter landscaping. And then we just wanted to confirm that the existing three-rail fence on the north is being replaced with a six-foot privacy fence, and that's all. I just had one comment. There's an interesting part in the parking lot where the existing parking meets some of the new parking. And it's just a little confusing how the curb line goes, so I, we might need to look at that.
I saw that, and I think we can get that fixed up.
And I did bring up that I saw this had a parking arrangement on it for the schools that were there. And we have looked through everything. We can't find anything. So if it existed, it'd get filed, so there's not any way to address that issue. And I think at least with the school that's there now, it doesn't create a problem.
Any additional staff comments? Any comments from the audience?
I have two. Were you showing new trees? Where you, where will you be planting them for the landscape?
Yeah, they're mostly on the north side. There's kind of a drainage swale that runs around the back of this site. That's also where it abuts single-family, so that's where we're planning on putting the extra trees.
And I'm assuming that the end unit will have a drive-through or am I wrong in that? Or possibly a drive-through?
It has room for a drive-through.
So they'll be coming around the back of the building potentially and pulling through?
Yes.
Are you adding those, what is it, six parallel parking spaces in the back? Are those new or would be new?
Yes. It's all striped east-west right now, so it'll just be restripped.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Any other questions from the commission?
We need you to come to the mic and ask a question.
It's ready. Where's the fence going?
Could you, could you tell us your name, please, and your address?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Tony Lippi. I live directly behind it.
Yeah.
On the other side of the existing drain run.
And this this project is required to have screening adjacent to residential. So on the back, on that east side, that they will have a screening as well as landscaping.
So it will be on the property line? On their property line? Yes.
Six foot.
All right, just all the way down or just where you, where y'all are building?
Yeah, it'd be a partial, not their whole east property line and north property line.
That's good. Okay.
Thank you. This would be done then in two parts. If we could take the variances together, if you're okay with that, parking lot orientation and the landscaping. This would be a call for the vote on the variances first.
Call for the vote.
Ray Cardiel, call for the vote.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton? Couch?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Part two of this would be on the large scale, and this would be a motion to the staff comments that you've heard.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Thank you, Chris.
Second.
Thanks, Mark.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton? Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are down to large scale. This is L 2411. This is NWA Steel Expansion. They've also asked for a waiver on the street improvements. And again, it's presented by ESI.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. We've kind of got a multi-phased expansion proposal for NWA Steel. First being some parking improvements and then some real specific areas through that manufacturing facility we're trying to get added to. The waiver is for, the request for the waiver is for County Line, which is along the north side. We've had a couple of meetings with staff regarding the the central street and the the new right-of-way requirements and things. So we're actually going to dedicate some additional right-of-way along County Line there to hopefully help get the, get the road moved forward. So I'll answer any questions.
Any staff comments or questions of Jason?
For planning, in addition to standard comments, planning asked that Phase Five have some additional frontage perimeter landscaping. And then we just note the waiver request for street improvements, W 2403.
Yeah, just for the record, Jason and I had discussion, this building has no available fire flow for firefighting. The hydrant up there only flows about 1,300 gallons per minute, which isn't enough for a building of this size. However, we've agreed and discussed putting in a sprinkler system that we're going to do in a phase plan that he's going to present and we'll work our way through. As they add the additional buildings, then they they will add sprinkler to sprinkler the entire building. And I've discussed this with the fire marshal and we figure we can work it out. He needs to show his fire line, his new fire hydrant and his FDC and his drawings that he submits for approval.
Thanks, Ed. Any questions at all or comments from the audience members? Again, this would come to the commission for any questions or comments. We would deal with the the waiver of the street improvements first. That would be a motion that we forward that to the city council.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for the street improvement.
Thank you. Thank you, Dale.
Second.
Brent, thank you.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton? Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Thanks. And Jason, you've got all the comments that came from Ed for fire. You've got that? Good, thank you. Next would be approval of the large scale. And this would be a motion and a second for L 2411.
Motion subject to staff comments.
I have a question. Sorry. How do we manage the phasing of this? Is this something the planning staff will just work through in zones that they're meeting the guidelines that we request? And it continues to phase through? Is that how this works?
They'll come back with a new large scale for each phase when we get a new building.
10-4?
And we may do it as a non-large scale if they can meet all these phasing and not have to come back to you all unless they need a variance.
Thank you.
We've got a motion from Brent, and this will be subject to all the staff comments that you've heard. We need, we need a second.
Second.
Thanks, Mark.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton? Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thanks. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Next section on the agenda deals with our board of adjustment. These are variance requests. First up on 3876 O'Hara Terrace, and it's a setback reduction, and it's offered by Donald Treat.
I'm just, I'm installing a semi-ground pool, and I want to go back off my back fence. I want to come another 10-foot instead of 20-foot. I want another 10-foot.
What's the size of that pool, the width and the length?
That will be a 15 by 30.
Any questions at all from the audience members on this variance request? Commissioners, any questions or comments of Mr. Treat?
What's the side setback? Or is it compliant? I can't remember if it's.
Yes, yes, I'll be good on the side. It's just the back, back.
But you're showing 15, not 10, or according to this drawing? Am I misreading that?
Yeah, the the pool will be 15 width. It'll go back to my back fence, and the 30 will be this way, which I'm eight foot. I'm good there.
Got you.
But I, but I need, I need the extra, probably an extra five foot is what I need.
Sure.
To get that 15 by 30 in. Yes.
This would be a call for the vote. Mr. Austin, thank you.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel? Cloud?
Yes.
Compton? Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
You still need to get, you still will need to get a permit to put it in?
Yeah, I'll file to put in for that. Thank you.
Thanks. Next on the board of adjustment is 2416. This is Felipe and Orfa Navarez. And it's presented by Felipe and Orfa Navarez, 1905 Cisco Avenue, a variance on their paving.
Hi, I'm Felipe Navarez.
Hello, I'm Orfa Navarez. We set gravel, and we didn't know that we needed a permit on the side of our garage.
Kind of gravel did you use?
Whitestone, about inch in diameter.
There was some, early in the process, there was some of this powdering that came into the street. Has that stopped or is that still continuing?
There's none in the street. I I pushed it all back and it was just, we just need to be packed, and it's packed pretty, pretty well now.
Okay.
It was just, there was a nuisance before that. It was just, we bought our place about a year and a half ago, and and our trucks, two trucks, full-size trucks, don't fit in our driveway very well. And it just became a muddy mess right there on the left, so I just filled it in. I thought it was all right to do that. Sorry about that.
And we did take out, from that picture, we sent new pictures in. He removed about a foot and a half and pushed it back.
I pushed it back on the property, away from property line. I'm sure it was exactly three feet away from the property line. That's what they requested. His name is Ron, Ron Hertz, came to our place, and I I spoke with him, and he just said that it needed to be pushed back exactly three feet. And I sent new pictures of, with the tape measure and everything, right there on the property line during this weekend.
And and we put topsoil after he took the gravel out.
Thank you.
Katie, did they apply for a driveway permit to widen it to that direction?
No, not that I know of. Not for paving, for sure.
And have you been out and looked at it since they pulled it back?
Turned out the wrong way, sorry. No, ma'am, I haven't been out there since the one day when I spoke to him. He had said that he was going to get hold of me, and we may have just missed each other. But I can go back out tomorrow and verify.
Do you intend this to be permanent or do you want to go back and pave it sometime in the future?
We're, we're not sure. Are we?
Not sure if I'm going to keep the home or sell it in a couple of years. I have a one-and-a-half-year-old and kind of outgrowing the place. It's only a two-bedroom, one-bath.
Thank you. Any questions or comments additional? Ron, any more comments at all on what what you saw? No. Any comments from members of the public on this property? This would be a call for the vote or questions or comments from the, from the staff, from, I'm sorry, from the commissioners?
So right now, we would be voting for for it to stay in place like it is right now?
With what they took off from the edge of the street and the edge of the property line? Because they tell us that's what they did. Yeah.
Not today. So like if if it gets approved, and he said he might sell in the next couple of years, would the person that buys the new house have to come back and get it done, or does it stay with him? That's what I'm asking.
It stays with the structure.
Did you ever get a quote or have you looked at what it cost to pave it?
I have, I have not yet, but if you guys prefer that, I I just, I know it's going to be around $4,500 or so.
We would probably have to redo like the entire garage, like the the garage driveway since that one's, it was already cracked when we bought it, and I mean, it's not in good shape either.
Could you do, if if the variance is approved, with a bill of assurance, that it can stay for that way in two years? And if it's not, after two years, you either have to come back and have it extended or it has to be removed or it has to be paved in two years. Does that give you enough? Does that give you enough time to decide whether you're going to stay there or not? And after the end of the two years, if you sell it, it either has to come back and that person has to ask for a variance to keep it or it has to be paved?
Okay.
Can we do that with a bill of assurance? Does that make you feel better?
Yeah.
And yeah, throughout two years, if you want less than two years, we can do, talk about less than two years.
You're okay with the two-year bill of assurance?
Yes, that would be perfect. Because we're going to probably be there for the next two or three years. At that point, we'd have to, whoever's the owner would have to either pave it or get another permission.
To keep it like that?
To keep it like that. Or if we're still living there, we would have to come back and do the same.
Right. That way we file it as a lien on the piece of property. So when you sell the piece of property, it will say that either it has to be paved or it has to be removed or new variance have to be taken if it's more than two years.
Okay.
Okay? And we'll remind you when the two years is up.
I'm sorry. So you're saying that section that has gravel is going to have a lien on it?
The entire property has a lien on it, saying that you will take care of this within two years. Either come back and get another variance extension, have it paved or have it removed in two years.
Okay, so I don't think I wanted to have a lien.
Does it carry any other thing other than just what you said, just to calm her from a perspective? There's nothing else that could happen, meaning it just in two years, somebody has to take action on it, right?
Well, when you sell it, the real estate agent and/or the title company will know it has a lien on it and has to be taken care of one way or the other.
Right. I'm understanding that part. What I'm saying is why we couldn't get it approved to stay how it is like that now?
You can ask for it to be voted on that direction. I'm just offering some way for the planning commission to know this is going to change in two years.
I mean, it looks nice the way it is. It's really in a straight line and it's packed. I think it's a great parking addition for us. I mean...
Yeah. We're not talking about the quality of what you did. The ordinance says when you park vehicles, it has to be on a paved surface.
Oh, that's why. Well, you can just do that, ma'am. If here, you know, if I have to sell the home and pave it before I have to sell it, which is probably what's going to happen, I'm okay with that. That's fine.
Okay. You're okay for the...
Yes, ma'am.
Planning commission to vote on granting the variance with a two-year bill of assurance that in two years it'll either be paved, removed, or you'll be back here asking for another variance.
Okay. And if I pave it, do I have to come back to...
Well, you need to let us know so that we can release that lien on your property and won't be there any longer.
Can I just send you like pictures or have...
So you'll need to come get a driveway expansion permit for the pavement. So if anytime in the next two years you guys decide you're ready to do that, come to the engineering department. We'll get you settled with that permit. You can pave the whole thing or, you know, just the gravel. And then planning will know that you're taken care of.
Okay. Okay? All right.
Good. Thank you. This would come to the commission as a call for the vote with the conditions that you've heard explained here regarding the bill of assurance.
Call for the vote for the bill of assurance.
Mark Cloud, call for the vote.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
We will prepare the bill of assurance.
You need to call the office and come by and it'll need to be signed and noted rise and it'll be filed at the county.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Over on page three, this is again a variance request. Top-notch rental LLC over on Spyglass. And it's presented by Daryl Adaviano.
My name is Daryl Adaviano and I was just trying to apply for the variance to get a setback from eight feet to five feet.
So five feet include the eve that hangs out there? Is that just as a wall?
The only thing that will overhang in the setback is actually the eve. So the wall in the house is really at the current eight-foot setback.
Okay. Steve, you want to comment on this one again?
We just want to ensure that the construction is non-combustible aluminum party board when you get your permit.
That is correct. That is the material we'll use.
Okay.
So with that stipulation, that if the variance is approved, you have to use that material on those eaves? Everybody understands that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any questions at all from the audience? Any more comments from staff at all? No? This would come to the commission as a call for the vote. Call for the vote. Ray Cardiel?
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, nine-zero. Thanks.
Thank you.
Board of adjustment, 2420. This is Gerson Ramos, presented by Guadalupe Ramos. And it's a setback over on 1881 Garnet Road from 20 to 15 feet.
Hello, this is Guadalupe Ramos and Gerson Ramos. Actually, just one clarification, it's not 15 feet. We remeasure it and it's actually 13 feet to the back fence. So we built a porch years ago. We didn't know we had to get a permit from the city. A few reasons why we built it is because we, the sun is always on the windows. Well, you can't really tell, but on the one on your left, on the right side, there's a double window and it's always like the sun was always hitting on that part of the house. And that's our bedroom, sorry, our bedroom. So we did it to save energy. Also, the kids were growing. We wanted just to have a fun, good space for us to spend time with them. We also had to replace the back door one time because it got rotten because of the water. So that's a few reasons why we built a porch, not knowing that we had to ask for permission.
Okay, do you encroach on the side setback by two feet too?
I'm sorry?
This drawing shows that the side setback, it's an eight-foot side setback, but your porch or something comes to six feet on that side? Eight foot, six inches?
Eight foot and a half.
Yeah.
Do you have a utility easement on the back of your property too?
Yes, there on the, yes.
And you're not into the utilities?
We're not, no. They're actually, like you can tell, their utilities are on this picture on the right. If you see, it's a little bit more prone. That's where we measure, actually.
Okay, did you get a permit for this structure?
No.
No, we didn't have a permit, but we already turned one in.
Ed, you want to comment on this one?
Yeah, they don't have a permit. They have an application and they're waiting on this variance before they can get the permit approved. The small shed in the back there that...
It's going to be removed.
It's going to have to be removed because it's within 10 feet of the structure, yes. And other than that, it's, yeah, it's not in the easement because it's not quite, if you'll notice from the overhead, it's not quite as deep as the other one we looked at just recently.
Any comments in the audience on this project? Again, this would come to the commission as a call for the vote or questions or comments.
So is this just a porch? Is it going to be open as we look at it now?
Yes.
Does it stay like that? Are you putting concrete floor or...
We're going to ask for...
You framing it for that?
Yes. But just concrete.
This should be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you, Brent.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Thank you.
You get with the billing permit on your, billing department on your permit.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've got Whispering Springs in phase one through four, which you can see on the agenda, 2421 and 2402. We've got a waiver of street improvements. We've got a variance on the dual street fronts, which may be on the front or treated as a rear setback, presented by Crafton and Toll.
Hello, Blake Murray with Crafton Toll. Which one would y'all like to do first?
Go ahead and do the Hilton Road ending first.
Sure.
We understand where that road really would end. We've got a little confusion about that.
Certainly. And I came before y'all several months back and asked for a variance at that intersection of Street B and Hilton Road. Basically, you know, those grades are at 5% or whatever we ultimately decided, I think it was five off the top of my head, through the intersection and then it kind of breaks off at 10%, which is what fire was comfortable with. As we kind of dug through and created the final design drawings for Hilton Road, we noticed even at 10% coming from that intersection south, there's no way we'll catch up with existing grade. And there was going to be like an eight-foot tall retaining wall, which, you know, obviously we wouldn't want to build anyways, but I think if the city's goal is to extend Hilton Road, which I believe that's the goal, you know, then they're coming back and ripping that out. And it's, it gives them a little more flexibility to stop it early. So we've been working closely with engineering through this entire process to try to make this transition as appropriate as possible for terminating it. So as currently proposed, it's stopping 55 foot short of the property line. That's at 10% slope and then it's breaking down. I think those grades are at three to one there at the terminus of the street. So happy to try to answer questions on that.
What you're showing then is that Hilton would be stubbed out or ended where you show it on the drawing.
Yes, sir.
Not at the exact intersection, but past the intersection.
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry if that was unclear. It looks like about 50 foot south of the intersection and then right of way would be dedicated to the southern property line.
Okay, good.
Would you do payment in lieu of improvements for the rest of it as if you built it like a normal street?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Do y'all have a mechanism to take that money?
We do.
Okay. Well, you'd be surprised that a lot of cities...
We take money well.
A lot of the other cities won't do that for whatever reason, so I was kind of curious.
But we have to have a waiver. If you're willing to do construction up to the back point and payment in lieu of for the rest of it, we don't need a waiver.
Okay. Well, that was easy.
Okay, everybody's got it on record. They're going to make payment in lieu of for the rest of it. Got it?
That seems fair.
On the agenda then, we can waive that street improvement that you see there, 2402. Let's just, we don't need to do that. We just, we have the variance request or...
On the variance request, you know, basically what we're looking at here is we have lots that have dual frontage with one of those frontages being a collector, whether minor or major.
Can we go back to that picture?
There we go. So on the north side of our property, we have the future Albright extension. And I think I designed all the subdivisions around here, including the one north of here, Hilton 3. On the south side of Hilton 3, that was treated as a rear setback, obviously because Albright wasn't proposed and still not built. But we're trying to be proactive, make sure we've addressed all these issues. As it stands, with that being a proposed road, even the future section, you know, that'd be considered a dual frontage, front on the north side and south side of Street F. As well as on Hilton Road, you know, obviously the driveways are going to front off Street F and Street E for, you know, all those are Street C. And it would not be in our intention, obviously, to front Hilton Road. It's not even allowed by code. So we're asking for the highlighted sections to be reduced and treated as a rear setback instead of a front setback. So asking for a 20-foot setback there instead of 30.
So only the highlighted areas?
Yes, ma'am.
Which means you're not doing those along, is that... What's the road on the west side?
That's just a local road.
Yeah, but doesn't that have, does that front up to a street or that backs up to another piece of property?
That backs up to another piece of property.
Okay. Then the interior streets, you're asking for those who not have two fronts?
Yeah, I'm asking for them to be, the collector one to be treated as a rear. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Rear setback.
Okay, along the northern, I got that one.
Yes, ma'am.
Along Hilton Road, what are you asking along there?
It's the same thing. So we'd ask that to be treated as basically the 20-foot easement there as well.
Isn't there a 25 utility easement there?
I can look real quick. Sorry, bear with me. Too many pages. You're asking good questions, though.
And technically, that would be two fronts. Each of those lots would have two fronts.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm sorry, that would be the 30-foot setback, just to not be treated as 35. We didn't want 35 on that one, but 30, a 30-foot setback is fine.
Okay. Where did you get a 35-foot?
Yes, sorry, for local streets it's 35 when I was asking for it. So really it's...
But Hilton's not a local street.
I know. That's what I'm saying. I got it confused when I was highlighting it. It's just for Albright.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
It's only the lots on Albright that you're asking for a variance. Now that we know what we're talking about, that makes sense.
Right.
It also needs to be noted on the preliminary plat and the final plat that there is no access to Albright.
Right.
From any of those lots.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If we're clarifying it just to that, then we're okay. You had us all really confused.
I think I had myself confused there for a second.
I think you did.
So for clarification for me, I'm a little slower. So you're just asking for this, for all the units at the top of this image?
Yes, sir, on Albright there.
Yes. Thank you.
And can we identify the numbers of the lots in a note and each one of those noted so there's no question when we come time to build?
Sure.
You can't face it the other direction and you can't have access to that street?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right. We've done away with the waiver request. We need a call for the vote on the variance request for these frontage lots that have been talked about.
Call for the vote.
Mark Cloud, call for the vote. Thanks, Mark.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Passes unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you.
The next variance request, Joe and Lori Boland. This is on 883 East Don Tyson Parkway. They've got an accessory structure that they want to talk about, presented by Joe and Lori Boland, or just Lori Boland.
Joe's in Montana. This is just a continuation of, we did the rezoning the last meeting that we were here, and this is for the setback, is my understanding, for the shop building that's there.
Okay. As we discussed when we started this, once you split that property over, it is no longer an accessory structure to a residential structure.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Nolan here is the adjoining property owner who will be receiving that property.
Okay.
In connection with his.
When that happens, and that property is transferred to him, then we can consider that as an accessory use at that time. But until he owns it, it can't be an accessory use standing on its own.
Okay. Well, that's what the variance is for right now, is my understanding, isn't it?
If, if I may, but I don't think Mr., Mr. Nolan's property right now has a primary structure either, right?
Correct. He is, that's why I brought him. He is trying to get water to his property. However, the adjoining property owner on the other side is refusing to allow him into the access of the easements.
So we have no way of knowing if this is going to be an accessory structure to a structure, because there's not one there?
Not currently, correct. He's been trying for several months to get it. It is now going to be in the courts.
Okay. I don't see how we can grant a variance to allow this to be an accessory structure to a structure that doesn't exist. Until the property has changed hands and there is a structure there, it, it's a non-conforming structure. You can't do anything with it.
Okay. What you did previously for, I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name. You gave like a two-year thing, because it may be several months before he's, he's able to get his water, to get his pad poured, and all that other things for his house.
Okay. So have you already filed a plat that splits this property? So the property hasn't been split yet.
Yes.
You did, you did a rezoning request to rezone the portion of it, but that doesn't split the property. And you can't split the property till there's water to the second site. I think we're confused, because rezoning it did not create a second tract.
Okay, then I am confused.
Okay. You can rezone a piece of property with the legal description of that property to zone it whatever you want to.
Okay.
It doesn't split the property until you file a subdivision regulation. And you, you and I talked about, it's already got one tandem lot split on that, on that lot?
Right. And you said I could gift it to an adjoining property owner.
Okay. But we got to go through all of that to get it done before we can address this as an accessory structure.
Okay.
And we got to get water to the... I think we're premature.
Okay.
I think you need to figure out how and what the timeframe is to get him to where he can split the property, because you got to have water to the other lot.
Right.
Before you can split the property.
And we're trying, obviously, we're trying for that.
Okay. So this accessory structure is still good with the house that's there, because it's still on the same lot. So until we get the other taken care of, and he gets water to the second lot, there's no variance for an accessory structure, because it's attached to the one that's already there.
Okay. What is my next step, then? My next step is to wait for the litigation to go through, or, or what happens there?
We can't split the property off until there's water to the second, to the lot, and there is a septic system been approved. Do you have either of those?
The septic system's been approved by the county, yeah.
Okay. You got to have water to it, too. You can't, we can't split the property until we can get water and sewer to it.
Now, the first, now, when you say the septic system hasn't been approved, you mean for the, for the, the lot that has just the accessory structure? Is that what you're saying?
Okay. Let me back up. This is very confusing. If you take this long, narrow piece of property, right now, there are two lots. Correct? There's one long lot that has accessory structure on it in the house, and there's another lot in the back.
That is his lot, yes.
And what you want to do is take the middle part out where that shed is now and attach it to the lot on the back.
Correct.
Okay. And you can do that without a conditional use. But in order to do that, we got to have water to that second lot. Is there water all the way down to the 875?
There is not.
Okay. That can't happen until you get water to that location.
I'm Derek Nolan. I own the 875 lot. And I've paid my $1,000 tap fee to Springdale Water. I've had my septic tank approved. And it all comes down to the neighbor where my easement for utilities is, and not give me access.
Okay, I understand that. But we are not in a position where we're going, we can say, require that easement to get there, and you don't have water to the property until you get it there.
Correct.
So you got to work out something to get water there before we can do all the split and switch around.
Okay. My next question to you, then, is if I get water to the front of my shop at 881, is that approvable?
It's not an accessory structure to a house. If you split it off that, off the front house.
Basically, we just need to wait till I get water on the property.
Correct. And I thought we understood that when we talked about it last time. I guess we missed the point. An accessory structure has to have a residence to go with it for it to be able to happen.
Yeah. Oh, I knew that.
I'm trying.
I know, you're trying. We can't help you till it gets done.
Okay.
Okay?
So tonight is just moot, right?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not mistaken, that, that might conclude where we're at. And I would turn it over to Patsy for a director's report.
Okay. With our normal meeting time being during spring break, we don't normally have a work session in March. Is that okay with everybody? In April, we'll have the third Tuesday, and we'll work, get into working on the land use plan now that we have the master street plan put together, and we'll, we'll do that on that next meeting. I don't have anything else to report unless you guys have something, that you have some questions for me.
Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Hearing none. We're adjourned. Thank you.